Audman Fisk.
Here.
Audman Rafe Wafe.
Here.
Audman Nguyen.
Here.
Audman Wilson.
Here.
Audman Holmes.
Here.
Audman Tindham.
Here.
Audman Grover.
Here.
Audman Rainey. Oh, all right. Audman Burris.
Here.
Eight to zero.
We have a quorum. Welcome to the Monday, February 13th, 2012, meeting of the Evanston City Council. The first item on the agenda is the mayor's public announcements and proclamations. And I am delighted to announce that we have a major gift from Marjorie and Charles Benton of an eagle sculpture that is in the main lobby. The eagle sculpture was created by Corin Dareharp Rutian—I don't speak Armenian quite that well—who lived from 1909 to 1992. The eagle was the central figure in the eagle room designed by Edward Durrell Stone of the United States Pavilion at the Brussels World's Fair of 1958. Mr. Hartunian's work is displayed at the Pennsylvania or Philadelphia Art Museum. And they have also donated four prints of Native American textiles originally created from an archival study by Jack Silverman. And the Public Art Committee will determine where those will be displayed. Marjorie and Charles Benton are wonderful people and longtime residents of the city of Evanston. And so, everybody, please go look in the main lobby.
Make your computer cancel.
Next is February 2012 National Children's Dental Health Month proclamation. Whereas the American Dental Association held the first national observance of Children's Dental Health Day on February 8th, 1949. And whereas the single-day observance became a week-long event in 1955. And whereas in 1981, the program was extended to a month-long celebration known today as National Children's Dental Health Month. And whereas good health can be achieved in part through good dental habits learned early and reinforced throughout life. And whereas the future is, to a large measure, dependent on the good health of our families. And by participating in the annual celebration of National Children's Dental Health Month, members of the dental team, parents, teachers, and others can keep children's smiles beautiful now and for years to come. And whereas the slogan for this year's campaign is "Rock Your Smile." Now, therefore, I, Elizabeth B. Tisdall, Mayor of the city of Evanston, do hereby proclaim the month of February as Children's Dental Health Month, an urge that all citizens and community organizations join in this observance. That concludes my announcements. City manager, do you have announcements and presentations?
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I do. I'd like to ask up Suzette Robinson, our Director of Public Works. We've been fortunate to be recognized by the local chapter of the American Public Works Association, and Suzette's here to tell us all about it.
Thank you. The Public Works Department—oh, good evening, Madam Mayor, Clerk Green, Alderman, and City Manager Suzette Robinson, the Director of Public Works. And I am pleased to announce that the Public Works Department was recognized by the suburban branch of the American Association, American Public Works Association, and awarded in two categories. The first—oops. The first category, the APD—and that award is given to an operational-level candidate, meaning somebody that works in the field. And it rises—and gives efficient customer service for a public works agency for five years or more. This year, I want to call up—oh, there he is—Robert Pompey. Will you come up to— Mr. Pompey has been with the city for six and a half years. And he is an outstanding team player. He's an equipment operator, too, who works in sanitation, previously collecting refuse and now collecting recycling. He is what I would call a quiet leader, doesn't say very much, but is very efficient at getting his job done. In fact, when we have seasonal employees that come help us, they often, more often than not, choose not to work with him because he—I was told that he runs through his route. But he typically finishes two hours ahead of everybody else on any given day. And he comes back and helps those that—to get the job done. So, he's an outstanding team player. And as a part of the sanitation work group, he stepped up surprisingly because he's so quiet and typically doesn't say much. But when I was looking for volunteers to look at how we could provide sanitation services more efficiently, his hand went up, and I was really surprised. And he learned all there was to know about the solid waste business and participated as an active member to help us put together some of the plans that we've brought before you and you've approved. So, please join me in congratulating Mr. Pompey. He did a fantastic job. And he was given this plaque, which is "For Everybody to See It," so.
Director Thomas, I believe someone in the audience has a camera he might like to use on this occasion.
You can come up front.
All right. And the Public Works Department also was awarded the Charles Walters Nickel Award for Environmental Excellence. And we were given this award based on our "Thank You for Thinking Green" project. And what that program consisted of was showing appreciation to residents. We picked five residents per ward, per month. And we placed the green sticker that they've been called "Thinking Green." We identified good recycling practices, you know, no plastic bags in the recycling. We also looked at those that had more recycling than garbage, so it was not based on just quantity alone of recycling. We also looked in the garbage cans as well to see that people were maximizing their efforts. And then we also selected 10 businesses per month across the city and recognized them. So, these—some of the pictures that you see are the residents that—and we gave them a can crusher so that they could have more room in their recycling container to fit more items. And then we sent them like a letter of thank you. And then the other thing that—the other component of the program was the business district recycling, the "Thank You for Thinking Green" cans that were placed throughout the business districts and also in the athletic fields at the parks to encourage recycling in those areas. And then the final part of the program was where residents could sign up for waste audits. So, we looked at not only those that were doing a great job at recycling, we also tried to encourage those who perhaps needed a little help and maybe some additional education to help them recycle more. So, we're still—I'm working with Catherine, and we're working primarily with multifamily units to see what we can do about increasing their recycling participation. But we will also do those waste audits for single-family homes. If people are interested, they can contact 311 and sign up, and we'll come out and talk to them and encourage them and show them how they could recycle because it will save you money to recycle more because you can have a smaller—pay less for it if you recycle more. So, thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, that concludes my announcements.
City Clerk, do you have any announcements?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I have two announcements. There will be a panel discussion this Wednesday, the 15th, relevant or redundant Illinois townships. It's going to be at the Unitarian Church on 1330 Ridge Avenue from 7:00 PM starting. On the panel will be Larry Sufferton, Honorable Larry Sufferton, Emily J. Miller, Bob Porter, and Sam Yingling. That's at 7:00 at the Unitarian Church. Also, on the 22nd of February, there's been a called meeting for a special township meeting and public hearing, which will be on the 22nd during the hours of 6:00 PM. So, the public is welcome to come out. That's all that I have for today.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is citizen comment. I'm going to call the first four speakers up. Please give your name and address and limit your comments to three minutes. Mike Vasilko, Junad Rizki, Kevin O'Connor, and Priscilla Giles.
Mike Vasilko, 2728 Reese Avenue, Evanston. Speaking about Item 04 tonight. It affects the Technology Innovation Center. The TIC funding is frequently on the Economic Development Committee's agenda. If I understand the TIC history correctly, this organization has been coming to and receiving funding from the city and its taxpayers for decades. Initially, Northwestern used to help fund TIC but have since withdrawn funding, leaving the city of Evanston and its taxpayers with the lion's share of the funding to be provided. During all of these years, TIC has not had to demonstrate any return on the investment Evanston continues to hand over each year. A skeptical person like myself can look at the facts on paper and come to the conclusion that this is a really sweet gig. A salary, office space, and no accountability to speak of. It's an even sweeter deal for the startup companies that are nurtured at TIC. Free office space, free advice, free technology, no obligation to stay in Evanston. Evanston has nothing tangible to show as return on their investment of hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not over millions of dollars, over the past 20 years. I guess my question is, what kind of economic development strategy is this for Evanston? On a totally different subject, I just have a question. I—maybe somebody can answer it. I recently came across a published RFP regarding a proposed miniature golf course near Chandler Newburger. I guess my question is, in particular, who retains the property ownership? Thank you.
Mr. Vasilko, Mr. Bob Kowits, I'll answer your question.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, as you know, we have been working on issues associated with the Evanston World Golf Association and the golf course that they operate. As part of those deliberations last year, staff was authorized to work on a project for a miniature golf, mini golf facility. We have put out an RFP for interested parties. We are looking at potentially using portions of our existing property, which we own, adjacent to Chandler Newburger, as well as leased property that is part of the golf course currently, which is leased from the Metropolitan Water Reclamation District. So, that has gone out over the last couple of weeks, and we'll be back to the council with updates as appropriate.
Thank you.
Junad Rizki, I noticed we're sending five council members to learn about government in Washington beyond the fact—okay. Beyond the fact this is a questionable use of $10,000 of the taxpayers' money, what will council members learn? Maybe they will explain to you how—why it's not good financial practice to take $7 million out of our water fund and transfer it to the general fund. The 15% water rate increase that ratepayers pay is not for capital improvements. Tonight, you're going to approve a $1.5 million street repair. Please explain to me, have we looked at the 100-year water pipes under the streets, and are we going to be replacing any of those with the funds that we seem not to have? I'm very concerned that we're trying to sell off a piece of land surrounded by park—that's the Arts Center mansion. Clearly, if we're in such trouble, we can't even fix the water pipes, but we have to sell off the land. Selling a building, basically, that's totally surrounded by parks, private—or public land is just so totally ridiculous. It also makes about as much sense as we were charging $1 in rent for that building for years and never fixing it. Economic development here is a big mess. The giveaway of our tax dollars to private interest on messed-up projects with no value to the public is very disturbing. This Lit Theater project is another example. While the other speaker, Mike Vasilko, basically thought it was a good deal, I don't see how $600,000 of our money to raise a roof of a building, basically—you're going to rebuild it and give it to an organization that basically has a revenue of $100,000 and lost money the last couple of years. This makes any economic development sense. In the real world, nobody would lend them any money. So, you're going to be in for about $1 million into this of taxpayer money for a group that basically brings in 6,000 theatergoers. And that translates to 16 people a day. So, that's pretty silly. Maybe someone can explain what you might learn in Washington. Fiscal responsibility, real-world analytical skills, common sense. Thank you.
Good evening, Kevin O'Connor, 1227 and a half Isabella. I'd like to speak on Agenda Item 03. I attended last month's EDC meeting, and the rep from Kane McKenna said something interesting in response to a—an Aldermanic question concerning the legislative climate in Springfield. And he responded something that, "Well, there's more anti-TIF stuff down in Springfield than there used to be," or something to that effect. So, you know, I would like to say I'm not anti-TIF. I'm just anti the way it's been used here in Evanston. A TIF is supposed to be used for a blighted neighborhood. I think all of our TIFs, especially the downtown two TIF, be hard to make the argument that that was a blighted neighborhood. We're now considering three more TIFs. The Dempster Dodge TIF, from all I can tell, is just going to be for that one parcel unless that's changed. And the owner of it picked it up for $8.1 million at auction, or the price of between three to eight, depending on your town—the price of three to eight McMansions. So, remember, the TIF districts, none of the money goes out of it for 23 years. So, we have the school districts raising tax and all of the other taxing districts, plus our own town is raising the taxes. We had $9 million at the end of the downtown two TIF, and we were supposed to be in surplus and not have to raise taxes. But we're broke, we're bankrupt, and doing this again, it's not going to change the result into that. And, you know, as much as I'd like to see more development in blighted areas in this town, we gave all this sales tax rebate to Joseph Freed. That didn't save anything. So, it seems to me that, I guess, just like Field of Dreams, this might be called Field of Screams for the taxpayer. If you bribe them, they will come. You privatize profit, you socialize risk, and it's not right. We don't have money, and we continue to spend money we don't have. Somewhere, we're missing that, and either I'm completely off my rocker or, you know, I just don't get it. Thank you, and a happy Valentine's Day to everybody.
I'm Priscilla Giles at 1829 Ashland here in Evanston, and I am speaking to the non-agenda item of the driveway—cutaway driveway athlete with Jordan that does not exist. It did exist, and most recently, I watched a person with multiple sclerosis with the driver trying to get into the building. They went to the back. There's no space for turnaround because of the garbage that has been built. At first, it was not that covered, and then it was decided that it should be covered, which leaves less space for a car to turn around. There's no turnaround in the back. There is no sidewalk leading to the entrance that the driver tried to get to in the front. And the person was trying to get on a—from a motorized scooter into the medical plant. I think that that cutaway can be put back. It was there before, and it's so unfair to the people who are really handicapped to get into that building. They cannot easily get in, even if they come to the back on walkers. They have a long distance to walk, and I would just like to see the city of Evanston be more humane. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Joshua Braun, Dan Schemmerhorn, Padma Rayo, and Betty Esther.
Good evening. My name is Joshua Braun. Two weeks ago, I was very honored to hear that I had been nominated to sit on the upcoming Landlord Licensing Committee. Last week, I was very disappointed when I received a call informing me that my nomination to the same committee had been rejected. I had the opportunity to speak with Mayor Tisdall briefly, and she suggested that I come before the city council tonight and ask her to repeal my rejection. My family has owned and operated residential property in Evanston for almost two decades. We have prided ourselves on maintaining our buildings in a proper and safe manner, as well as working with the city and community to ensure a positive environment around all of our properties, both near Main Street and Custer Avenue and the Northwestern neighborhood. I was told my nomination was somewhat controversial, but as far as I can tell, this topic is one of the most long-running controversies that Evanston has had to contend with. As of today, all the residents on the committee reside directly in the area surrounding Northwestern, yet none of the landlords who are on the committee have any properties near Northwestern. In order for this committee to be effective and come to resolutions that are mutually agreed upon, each group needs to be adequately represented. For many years, I've been committed to helping come to resolutions that will work for all the groups involved. This includes sitting on ad hoc committees with Alderman Homes and university officials, having a positive working relationship with the property standards inspectors, staying in contact with the Evanston police officers who work in the area near our properties, and ensuring that both groups have my personal cellphone number. And most recently, I will be meeting this week with university officials to help them develop an education program to assist students as they transition to off-campus living. I only ask for the opportunity to come together with everyone—residents, landlords, city officials, students, university officials, and tenants—to work towards a goal that will truly resolve this issue that has been negatively affecting the community for so many years. A real change is needed. Please allow me that opportunity to let my knowledge, ideas, and experience be part of that change. As part of my comments, I would like to address one last item. As some of you may know, my business recently refused an inspection to three of our properties. In the 15 years my company has been doing business in Evanston, we have never refused an inspection or an inspector to enter one of our properties. Furthermore, we have always worked with the city inspectors to resolve any concerns that they may have. We became concerned as to the appropriateness of the most recent inspection requests we received for three of our properties. We were directed to follow appropriate channels if we had questions about any of our properties and therefore submitted FOIA's for each of the properties. In past years, if we had questions about any of our properties, inspectors were always willing to discuss concerns verbally. This requirement of submitting FOIA's was a new revelation to us. According to the records provided to us by the city, none of the properties had any open code violations nor any open complaints. Furthermore, one of the properties had just been inspected this past August. We contacted the city inspector, inquiring as to the reasons for the inspection, and even volunteered information about the properties, thinking the information provided might answer any questions the city may have. We received back a response that did not address any of our inquiries. We then sent a detailed email to the city inspector and received no response. Given the lack of responsive inquiries and the lack of evidence warranting the inspections, we felt that it was not appropriate to proceed with these inspections without first understanding their basis. While we feel that the current course of action taken by the city is not an effective way to handle the situation, we hope a solution that all parties—that—we hope a solution that meets all—the needs of all the parties is identified in the near future. Thank you again for your time. Again, as a person who has a lot of ideas and truly wants to make a difference, I'd like to ask—and I would like to ask that you reconsider my nomination to this committee. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I believe what I said was, when you asked how to meet with the whole council, that if you came tonight, that would do it.
Good evening, Mayor Tisdall, esteemed Alderman, manager Bob Kowits. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Dan Schemmerhorn, and I'm here this evening to talk about the topic of the mayoral subcommittee studying the proposed licensing ordinance. At the Planning and Development Committee meeting held on November 14th and the council meeting held on November 28th, the licensing ordinance was discussed, and the PND Committee observed a number of shortcomings in the licensing ordinance as it had been proposed. The committee recommended to the city council that a mayoral subcommittee be formed to study the ordinance. The recommendations included discussions about the committee, including all the stakeholders to the issue—residents, university officials, tenants, and landlords. And I have to say, I was very pleased to hear that the committee was being formed. In fact, I came to the city council meeting on the 28th to applaud the PND Committee for making just such a recommendation. For too long, the issues relating to the regulation of the rental housing industry in Evanston have been proposed and discussed without the involvement of the stakeholders. It is refreshing to see this new approach being taken on this issue. A couple of weeks ago, the mayor's office called and asked Josh Braun to be a member of the mayoral subcommittee. Josh was looking forward to the opportunity to be involved in the discussion, but unfortunately, last week, the mayor's office called and told Josh that his name had been removed from consideration of the list of committee members. I'm hoping that the council would reconsider the appointment of Josh Braun to the mayoral subcommittee on licensing. I've had the pleasure to work with Josh over the last few years, mainly at meetings regarding issues and concerns with regard to rental properties around Northwestern University. And I can tell you that Josh has been involved in these meetings with the officials at Northwestern, the city, students, and the concerned neighbors, and has always taken the time to be a part of the discussion. With his experience and dedication to this business and the community, I can't think of a reason why he should not be a part of the subcommittee. He would provide a voice of experience and reason regarding the operation of rental properties in Evanston. And in fact, as Josh mentioned, the university has asked him to speak at a workshop for students getting ready to move off campus and out of the dorms and the rental housing community. Josh, along with representatives of the Interfaith Housing Center, of the North Shore, and other industry professionals, will be educating students as they take this step in their lives. If the goal of the mayoral subcommittee on licensing is to fully review the concept, we would all be better off having a person like Josh Braun involved in these discussions. Thank you very much.
My name is Betty Esther. I stay at 2031 Turst Street. I got up tonight—I signed up to speak on the Twitter, the town hall meeting that is going to happen. But now, I have to speak on something else. This is Black History Month, and we talk about fairness and transparent and being treated fairly. I have came here. I signed up after Mrs. Giles. She signed on the pink sheet. My name was right behind her, but two gentlemen, off the Caucasian persuasion, spoke before me.
Betty, I made a mistake in reading the list. I apologize. You were ahead of the two men.
I accept your apology, but it's an oversight that has happened too many times because it goes back to the Twitter, the General Assistance Program, the TIF that is opposed for the Dempster site. These are things that are happening where the people around there are not fully addressed or even spoken to or come out to and say, "Hey, we finna do this." We pay our property tax just like everybody else. It's time that we pay close attention to what we do, how we do it, because it does matter. That town hall meeting that will happen through—is it Twitter or—okay, which one is it that is called and which one it is when you're doing it? They told me it's two different things. I don't do it. I tried to sign up for it. Haven't had it luck yet, but I'm going to get there. But there are so many people in my neighborhood that do not have that capability. there are so many people in my neighborhood that do not have that capability. That is an oversight to have a town hall meeting to where too many of your citizens and your residents cannot participate. We did, you had the opportunity and the pleasure of being at your town hall meeting that you came to Fleetwood Jordan and had in the gym, and you promised to come back. That hasn't happened. We would love to have you back. We would love to be included. But again, I accept your apology, and the things that we are doing, we are not taking care of, and looking at it and reading and following the rules that are set in black and white that we should be following. And I'll be waiting to hear the reason why on the 22nd of this month, what a town committee, township, town hall people, off the town board, trustee board, you gotta request an objection to a petition that you have not acted on that where the state statute specified very detail. You had it read to you how this was supposed to be done, and that wasn't followed. So please, start following what is put in front of you, and thank you, and I do accept your apology now, Mayor.
Thank you.
Padma Rao, 2246 Sherman. My comments were reviewed and approved by my attorney. We object to this council's vote at Kendall to sentence over two dozen mature trees to death for no reason and to endanger pedestrians with an alley that dumps traffic onto the narrowest street. This council never answered a single concern. Where is your accountability to the taxpayers? The Evanston Patch reported that your first ward member assured the developer's lawyer that your vote would be pushed through no matter what taxpayers say. Not one of you expressed any care for taxpayers' concerns. Instead, you voted with no discussion. Where is your transparency? The packets for your meetings show payments totaling tens of thousands of tax dollars to Holland and Knight for legal representation. The packet for your March 14th meeting includes a letter from the developer's lawyer stating that the developer hired the same law firm to sue the city. But the Illinois Supreme Court rules and case law prohibit such double representation against a current or former client. The Illinois Supreme Court held that its rules have the full force of law. So why don't you protect taxpayers' funds? Is it because it's not your money? Instead, why did your mayor, your lawyer, and your eighth ward member interrupt and attack us? Is it because your first ward member's son works for the same law firm? Don't your attempts to silence us create the impression that your loyalty to your first ward member interferes with your duty to the taxpayers? Isn't that also a conflict of interest? Speaking of conflict of interest, your lawyer's memorandum dated September 12th in the packet for your September 19th meeting states that your law department has a conflict of interest in the township discontinuance issue. Yet, your lawyer refuses to withdraw from the matter as required by the Supreme Court rules. Why don't you defend taxpayers' legal rights? Why are you hell-bent on dismantling the community's safety net? Where is your compassion for my neighbors in need? The video of your last meeting shows that during my comments, the microphone was muted for no apparent reason. The video of your December 12th meeting also shows unexplained muting of the microphone during my comments. Given your existing pattern of animosity against us, my attorney suspects that these incidents may be additional violations of our First Amendment rights. Why do you invite litigation by antagonizing taxpayers? Is it because you think it's not your money at stake? I suggest that you all read the Illinois Supreme Court case in ReHimmel. In light of that opinion, I submit that instead of attacking us to cover up your lawyers and law firms misconduct, you have an absolute duty to report that misconduct. Protect the trees and pedestrians at Kendall. Let the township help my neighbors. Stop wasting tax dollars on your pet projects and personal vendettas. Otherwise, you'll see the court, and I'll see y'all next time.
Thank you.
I think my name should be in the list, too, unless there is a problem with the mayor's reading. I am small, but not invisible. My name is not read.
Your name was going to be read. I read four at a time, but you were already standing up there waiting to speak. If you'd like me to read it, I'll read it.
You may read.
E.K. Rao.
E.K. Rao, 2246 Sherman Avenue. My comments were reviewed and approved by my attorney. The main issue is the Kendall property re-subdivision. It involves killing trees and endangering pedestrians. The questions regarding this project were never answered, but we were treated badly by this council for asking them. Why? Your first ward member championed for this project, and according to the Evanston Patch, she assured the developer's lawyer that the project would be pushed, no matter what the citizens comment. Why do you condone such a behavior from an elected official? Is it condoneable? The mayor kept interrupting us and unleashed her lawyer to attack our First Amendment rights. Will your eighth ward member ever learn that she should keep quiet when taxpayers speak during their allotted time? Baseless blustering bullying by your members and staff may be amusing to you, but I don't think it creates proud moments in the history of this great city. So, what exactly is your role? Is it to do whatever you want and be abusive to the common people who put you up there every four years? All but one of you took an oath of office in May 2009. Does your oath involve killing of the trees? Does it involve destroying the city's history? Does it involve dancing to the tune of the developers? Does it involve taxing the residents to the extreme to satisfy your unquenchable thirst for your pet projects while ignoring the needy? Does it involve letting Holland and Knight get away with double representation? Just look in the mirror and ask yourselves, are we fulfilling our oath? The answer could be shattering because mirrors don't tell a lie. After knowing the truth, you will have no choice but to fulfill your oath of office or live with a lie. Is living with a lie really living at all? I'll be back, and that's the truth.
Thank you. Is there one more gentleman, I'm told, who wants to speak? And is there anyone else who wants to speak? Okay.
Sorry, I didn't make the time for my name to be on the list. My name is Andrew Roberts. I live at 1009 Wesley Avenue. I would like to formally request consideration for my addition to the Landlord Licensing Committee. I've been following the creation of this committee fairly closely, and as Mr. Braun just pointed out, there is not a single landlord that has been proposed or included on this committee who currently owns property in the areas around the university. Though this issue affects all landlords in Evanston, the most recent issues surrounding the over occupancy are in large part what has brought this matter to the service. As such, I'm asking the council to consider including my participation in this committee as a landlord who has ties to several of the communities that will be affected by, by the work of this committee. I both live and work in Evanston and have been an Evanston resident for nearly 14 years. I'm an Evanston rental property owner with rental units in a number of different neighborhoods, including the university area, but also other residential neighborhoods. I was a graduate of Northwestern University approximately 10 years ago. During my time at the university, I lived both on and off campus, and am familiar with the issues that cross, cross both of these communities. I'm a member of the Evanston Property Owners Association and have relationships with numerous landlords in the community. I'm involved with the university and students on multiple levels as a landlord, and I'm aware of many of the issues and concerns from these constituents. Previously, this council announced its intention to include landlords, both big and small, in the process. I represent the latter category, which I do not believe is currently represented in the committee as it stands. Finally, and perhaps most significantly, one of my buildings and my name were included on the list of 52 that was released to the, by the city to Northwestern University, which was so widely publicized. In fact, my name was the first on the list. I'm not terribly political, not terribly politically active, and I have no real affiliations that should give any of you pause. I do, however, believe that you should consider including me on the committee to bring a balanced perspective relating to a number of different communities that would otherwise not, not be representative, represented. I also think that in order to give this committee the legitimacy and support that it's looking for from the landlord community at large, the committee needs to consider the perception issues that would inevitably arise should the specific interests of a large portion of the landlord community who own rental properties surrounding the university not be represented by somebody on the committee. I respect the council's efforts to create an unbiased and cooperative committee. I think there can be a positive resolution to the issues facing the city and landlord community, and I hope that you will consider my inclusion. I'm happy to discuss any of this further if should any of you have any questions, and I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. That concludes public comment. Alderman, when could we have the consent agenda, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The first item on the agenda is M1, Approval of Minutes of the Regular City Council Meeting of January 23rd, 2012. Second item is M2, Approval of amended minutes of the Special City Council Meeting of November 29th, 2011. Third item is M3, Approval of amended minutes of the Regular City Council Meeting of November 14th, 2011. Under Administration and Public Works Committee, we have A1, City of Evanston Payroll Through January 15th, 2012, $3,009,145.87. City of Evanston Payroll Through January 29th, 2012, $2,572,422.23. Item A2, City of Evanston Bills for Fiscal Year 2011 Through February 14th, 2012, $1,639,598.99. City of Evanston Bills Fiscal Year 2012 Through February 14th, 2012, $2,617,614.33. Credit Card Activity Through December 31st, 2011, $92,272.27. Item A3.1, Approval of Single-Source Purchase of Library Automation Services from Cooperative Computer Services. The staff recommends approval of the single-source purchase of library automation services from cooperative computer services in the amount of $83,400. The 0.9% increase over last year is the same for all 23 libraries in the consortium. Funding will be provided by the Library Fund's Technical Services Internet Solution Provider Account. This item is for action tonight. Item 3.2, A3.2, Approval of Renewal of the Main Library Building Automation System Maintenance Agreement with Siemens Building Technologies. Staff recommends a one-year extension of the service and maintenance agreement with Siemens Building Technologies for the building automation system at the main library at a cost of $27,220. This is the second year of a three-year agreement approved by the City Council on October 25th, 2010, which covers the period January 1, 2012, through December 31, 2012, and includes a 3% increase over 2011. Funding is provided by the Library Fund Building Maintenance Account. This item is for action tonight. Item 3.3, Approval of Contract Extension to HAVI Communications for Emergency Lighting and Aftermarket Equipment. Staff recommends City Council approval of a one-year contract extension for installation, removal, and repair of law enforcement and emergency fire response vehicles and equipment to HAVI Communications in the amount of $55,000. Funding for these will be provided, but for by account, excuse me, will be provided by account number 771065060, which has a budget of $950,000. This item is for action tonight. Item A3.4, Approval of Contract Extension to WRF Industries for Annual Inspection and Repairs of Heavy Fire Apparatus for One Year. Staff recommends City Council approval of a one-year contract extension to WRF Industry in the amount of $95,000 to provide required annual inspections and repairs for heavy fire apparatus vehicles. This item is for action tonight. Approval, excuse me, A3.5, Approval of Solid Waste Agency of Cook County Disposal Fees for Fiscal Year 2012. Staff recommends approval of the 2012 refuse disposal fees to SWANK, not to exceed the amounts of $83,300 for capital costs, $1 million for operations and maintenance, and $40,000 in recycling transfer fees. This item is for action tonight. Item A4, Approval of Change Order Number Three for the 2011 Comprehensive Parking Garage Repair Project. Staff recommends approval of Change Order Number Three to Bully &amp; Andrews in the net amount of $84,240 for the 2011 Comprehensive Parking Garage Repair Project. This change order will increase BNA's current contract amount from $2,569,353.20 to $2,653,593.20. This item is for action tonight. Item A5, Resolution 3-R-12 Authorizing the Use of Motor-Fuel Tax Funds for Roadway Construction and Related Engineering Services. The Department of Public Works recommends the City Council approval of Resolution 3-R-12 Authorizing the Use of Motor-Fuel Tax Funds in the amount of $1,400,000 for the 2012 Motor-Fuel Tax Street Resurfacing Project and $132,727 for Design and Construction Engineering Services by City Staff. This item is for action tonight. Item A6, Ordinance 13-O-12 Amending Class P Liquor License. Local Liquor Commissioner recommends City Council adoption of Ordinance 13-O-12, which increases the quantity of alcohol a craft distiller is authorized to manufacture and store to 15,000 gallons per year. The increase is in accordance with the Illinois State Law, which was amended effective August 19th, 2011. This item is for introduction. Item A7, Ordinance 1-O-12 Amending the City Code to Establish a Three-Way Stop at Church Street and Judson Avenue. Staff recommends the adoption of the proposed ordinance 1-O-12, by which the City Council would amend Section 10-11-5 Subsection C, Section 5, Subsection C of the City Code, to establish a three-way stop at Church Street and Judson Avenue. This item is for action tonight. A very good place to have a three-way stop, I must say. Planning and Development Committee, Item P1, Ordinance P-O-12 Granting a Special Use for a Type II Restaurant at 914.5 Noiz Street. The ZBA and city staff recommend the adoption of Ordinance 5-O-12 Granting a Special Use Permit for the Operation of a Type II Restaurant at 914.5 Noiz Street. Applicant Dennis Doyle proposes to lease half of the current location, housing rolling and dough catering service, and open a carryout and delivery pizza and Italian ice restaurant called Ice and a Slice. This item is for introduction. Item P2, Ordinance 19-O-12 Granting a Special Use for a Child Daycare Center at 829 Foster Street. The ZBA and city staff recommend the adoption of Ordinance 19-O-12 Granting a Special Use Permit for the Operation of a Child Daycare Center by Unity Nursery School at 829 Foster Street. This item is also for introduction tonight. Under Human Services Committee, H1, Approval of Township of Evanston January 2012 Bills. Township Supervisor recommends approval of Township of Evanston Expenditures for the Month of January 2012 Totalling $94,845.31. This is for action. H2, Updates on Uses of the Noiz Cultural Arts Center Harley-Clark Mansion and Authorization for Next Steps. It is recommended that the City Council receive the City Manager's Report and authorize the City Manager to: 1. Negotiate a Memorandum of Understanding with Piven Theater Workshop, leading to long-term lease for a portion of Noiz Cultural Arts Center and proposed agreement pertaining to other issues for Piven's occupancy at the center. 2. Continue working with a new Noiz Center Tenants Association on operational and space issues at the center and potential amendments to 2012 leases as appropriate, and new lease conditions for future years for City Council consideration. 3. Continue working with the City, the Evanston Arts Center on a new location to relocate its programs and operations within Evanston. 4. Obtain a property appraisal of the Harley-Clark Mansion, 2603 Sheridan Road, with proposed subdivision of the property to allow for public access to the lakefront. subdivision of the property to allow for public access to the lakefront and other public uses in the area. And five, return to the city council no later than April 30, 2012, with a proposed plan for the solicitation of proposals for other uses of the mansion beginning in 2013. This item is for action tonight. Under Rules Committee. O.1, Ordinance 12-0-12 Amending the Evanston City Code to Make Certain Changes to the City of Evanston Public Library Board's Authority and Budget. It is recommended that the city council consider this ordinance amending the Evanston City Code to make certain changes to the Evanston Public Library Board's Authority and Budget. In addition, it is recommended that the city council create a joint committee with the library board to develop recommendations for changes and further administrative operations of the library and request the mayor to appoint two aldermen to the committee. This is for introduction. O.2, Resolution 5-R-12 Amending the Composition of the Membership of the Transportation and Parking Committee. Staff, the Transportation and Parking Committee, and the Rules Committee recommend approval of Resolution 5-R-12 Amending the Composition of the Members of the Transportation and Parking Committee to Include a Member of the Environment Board, which was established pursuant to Ordinance 63-0-71. This item is for action tonight, and we are looking forward to having that new member as part of our committee. Under Economic Development Committee. O.3, Approval of Amendment to Kane McKenna and Associates Contract for Economic Development Services, RFP 12-39. EDC and staff recommend city council authorize the city manager to amend the TIF consulting contract with Kane McKenna to include a TIF eligibility study for a proposed amendment to the Washington National TIF District for an amount not to exceed $31,000. Staff recommends utilizing funds from the Washington National TIF District for this. This item is for action tonight. O.4 is off the agenda and will be addressed by the committee chair. Item O.5, Resolution 8-R-12 Authorizing Financial Assistance for Ermco for Manufacturing Production Enhancement. Staff and the EDC recommend consideration of Resolution 8-R-12 Authorizing the city manager to negotiate and execute an agreement to provide $63,000 construction loan to Ermco, a manufacturing company of lubricants located at 2117 Greenleaf Street. Funding for this will be provided by the West Evanston Tax Increment Financing District. This item is for action tonight. O.6, Approval of Financial Assistance from the Facade Improvement Program for Ermco. The EDC and staff recommend that city council approve financial assistance in the amount not to exceed $13,943.69 to Ermco, still located at 2117 Greenleaf Street, for facade improvements. The funding for this will come from the West Evanston TIF. This item is also for action this evening. Item O.7, Approval of Extension of Time for Execution of the 2011 Facade Improvement Grant Projects. The EDC and staff recommend city council approval of an extension of time for completion of five facade improvement projects that were considered and approved in 2011. Staff proposes a required completion date of Friday, August 3, 2012, for the uncompleted projects. The adopted fiscal year 2012 budget did not include a carryover of the unspent fiscal year 2011 funds. Therefore, approval of extensions of time for these projects would result in the utilization of 2012 funds. This item is for action this evening. Finally, O.8, Approval of Evanston West End Business Association Application for Evanston Great Merchants Grant Program. The EDC and staff recommend the city council approve a great merchants grant in the amount of $5,425 to the West End Business Association. Funding will be provided by the EDC's Business District Improvement Account. Under Appointments. For the Mayor's Youth Task Force, this is Appointment 2, for the Mayor's Youth Task Force, Zolly Webb. For MWEBE Development Committee, James Davis. The next item has been removed-
Could we please pull that item, the appointments?
I'm sorry.
Could we please pull the appointments from the consent agenda?
All of them?
Not the reappointment, but the appointments.
They are, all right, then they are pulled. Under Reappointment, to the Preservation Commission, Diane Keen. With that, Madam Mayor, I conclude the consent agenda.
Thank you very much. Seeing no lights for discussion, could there be a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tendem.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Burris.
Aye.
Eight to nothing, the consent agenda passes.
Alderman Tendem, could we have Economic Development, please?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is O.4, Resolution 9-R-12 Authorizing the City Manager to Execute the Second Modification to the Funding Agreement with the Technology Innovation Center, or TIC. Staff and the Economic Development Committee recommend consideration of Resolution 9-R-12 Authorizing the City Manager to Execute the Second Modification to the Funding Agreement with Technology Innovation Center. This agreement provides $25,000 to support TIC operations for the first quarter of FY2012 from the Economic Development Fund's Economic Development Partnership Contribution Account with a FY2012 budget of $280,000. I move approval.
It's been moved and seconded. Alderman Burris?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am a proponent of economic development, probably one of the biggest here, and of innovation and entrepreneurship. And I believe strongly in incubators. The problem I'm having with reallocating money or giving money to TIC again is the purpose of the incubator is to help foster businesses in the community and then have them out of the incubator and into the regular community. Renting spaces, hiring more people, I don't see that happening here at the level that we need it to. I believe we need to monitor TIC more closely and set benchmarks that are more stringent to make sure that we're not just giving money to have a landlord give space, inexpensive space, to small businesses, which isn't a bad thing. However, I'm not sure that that's what we're in the business of doing and what is our ROI. So what are we getting back? And we need to make sure that when we're giving money, and this has been a substantial amount of money over the last at least three years that I know, that we're getting something for that. Thanks.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My yes vote on item O.5, which is the funding, or O.4, funding for the Technology Innovation Center comes with a fervent hope that we will wean the TIC from its need for city support and that we can also follow up, as staff has been doing over the last couple of years, with performance metrics and producing the kind of results that we expect. One of the great things that I saw when I was in Phoenix for the last National League of Cities Conference was an Innovation Center, Technology Innovation Center, that so exceeded what I knew here in Evanston. And I'd love to see for us, see us be able to evolve our Technology Innovation Center to something like what I saw in Scottsdale, actually. Was quite extraordinary. So my yes vote, again, it's about performance metrics, meeting those metrics, and I would hope weaning, launching the technology center in the same way that the technology center is designed to launch businesses itself.
Thank you. Alderman Tendem?
Thank you. My yes vote was much along the lines of Alderman Grover. I think that we have asked our city staff to work very closely with TIC in the next three months to determine some measurable outcomes that may have been different from the past, and we can look at their performance at that time. And I think this is a very good way of not breaking relationship, but trying to improve on it and communicate better as to what our needs are.
Thank you. Seeing no further lights, it's been moved and seconded to pass Resolution 9-R-12 Authorizing the City Manager to Execute the Second Modification to the Funding Agreement with the Technology Innovation Center. City Clerk, would you call the roll?
Alderman Fisk.
Aye.
Alderman Braithwaite.
Aye.
Alderman Nguyen.
Aye.
Alderman Wilson.
Aye.
Alderman Holmes.
Aye.
Alderman Tendem.
Aye.
Alderman Grover.
Aye.
Alderman Burris. Seven to one.
Seven to one, the motion passes. Alderman Grover, I think the next item is your concern about the appointments.
First, I'll move the appointments, if I may. Is that appropriate for me to do it?
Yes, certainly may.
That would be-
City Manager?
Yes, I provided a memorandum to the council earlier this evening. The appointment to the Liquor Control Board was inappropriately posted. That appointment does not require city council approval, so that I have recommending that that be withdrawn from the agenda. So the remaining appointments are for the Mayor's Youth Task Force, the MWEBE Committee, and the Landlord Licensing Committee. So if your motion would reflect-
It would. It would. Thank you very much for the update. So I move the appointment of Mr. Zolly Webb to the Mayor's Youth Task Force, Mr. James Davis to the MWEBE Development Committee, Reverend Patricia McPherson, I believe, to the Landlord Licensing Committee, Mr. James Skemmerhorn to the Landlord Licensing Committee, and Ms. Niabi Schmaltz to the Landlord Licensing Committee.
It's been moved and seconded.
As part of the appointment process, I greatly appreciate, Madam Tisdale, all that you do to balance our committees, our volunteer boards, commissions, and committees, to find the best and the brightest, to do this volunteer service. I'd like to, though, have a discussion, perhaps with the Rules Committee, about what it takes to disqualify someone from appointment to a board or commission, and whether an affiliation or an employment with Northwestern University will in every case be an automatic disqualifier for service on a board, commissioner, committee. I don't feel as if my ward, for example, needs to be represented on this committee. I'm really hoping that the committee brings together all the appropriate stakeholders, the people with the expertise, and the sensibility to make this a high-functioning committee with a good result and lots of credibility. And I just have concerns that the process of disqualifying someone from service on a committee undermines that. So I guess this is a referral to the Rules Committee if we could discuss, not the Mayor's, not Madam Tisdale, the manner in which you find and nominations come to you, but how they are disqualified once they've been nominated. Thank you very much.
It's been moved and seconded to pass the appointments. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, moving right along, we are at call of the wards. Alderman Fisk?
No report.
Thank you. Alderman Braithwaite?
I just want to quickly thank the residents that attended our ward meeting last Thursday, as well as thank the city manager, Mr. McCray, Chief Eddington, and the city staff that worked really hard to provide the information. We had a great turnout. We covered a lot of issues in a two-hour period of time. And just a reminder that we will host second ward meetings every month, the second Thursday of each month. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Nguyen?
Yes, Madam Mayor, just briefly, you and I were at the groundbreaking last week of the Amley development between Kenney and Kedzie on Chicago Avenue. This is a great day for the third ward, especially because the decrepit buildings that were on that site are now knocked down and cleared, and it's a good economic day for all of Evanston because this is our first development, residential development, in a long time. It'll be rental with live-work units in it, and I'm glad that we had the patience to wait while Steve Ross got his financing through this very tough recession. And it's all systems go there. If the weather continues to hold through this week, they should be pouring foundation. So congratulations to Amley and look for a lot of concrete trucks driving up and down Chicago Avenue.
Thank you. And thank you for all your hard work on that. Alderman Wilson?
No report.
Thank you. Alderman Holmes?
Just at the fifth ward, we'll be meeting on Thursday at 7:00 at Fleetwood.
Thank you. Alderman Tendem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple of things going on in Sixth Ward. This coming Wednesday, there'll be, the Central Street Business Association has invited members of the businesses along in Sixth Ward, along Central Street, to participate in a brainstorming session, and that will be held at 7:00 p.m. at the Morgante Wilson Architects at 2834 Central Street. So any business that would like to come and share their ideas and listen to other, listen to your peers along Central Street is welcome, particularly those west of Hartree and the Sixth Ward area. The second thing is the Mitchell Museum of the American Indian in the Sixth Ward, a little gem that we have that not everyone knows about. They're actually celebrating their 35th anniversary this year with a gala at the Unitarian Church of Evanston on 1330 Ridge Avenue. This will happen March 3 from 6:30 to 9:30, and it should be a great cultural experience. This will honor their work in preservation and education and hopefully encourage to get the word out more about this wonderful organization. If you have questions, you can go to MitchellMuseum.org and connect, and there'll be a lot of information there about the actual event. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman Grover?
Back to the Central Street Business Association, I want to thank the Business Association President Todd Rupenthal and city staff Megan Jones and Johanna Niden for two things from last week, door-to-door visits with these businesses east of Green Bay Road on Central Street. We got a lot of good ideas. And then a subsequent brainstorm session with members of the association and those business owners the one night last week. We came up with a lot of great ideas that I hope will come to fruition. Second, thank you to Carl Bova for a jam, for a jar of his famous crab apple jelly. It's the best stuff in town. I'm not going to share. And last is- I don't know where he came from. Oh, Carl, if you're watching, crab apples from the crab apple trees in Twigs Park, Evanston's own Twigs Park, which is one of our, talk about a hidden gem in Evanston. It's the most lovely park in all of Evanston. And ward meeting on Thursday, March 1 at 7:00 at Chandler Newburger. Please join us.
Thank you. Alderman Burris?
The next ninth ward meeting is February 29 at 7:00 p.m. at the Levy Center. I hope to see you there.
Thank you. Alderman Wilson, do you have a motion?
I do. Pursuant to five Illinois compiled statutes, ILCS 120/2A, I move that the city council convene into executive session to discuss agenda items regarding real estate and minutes. These agenda items are permitted subjects to be considered in an executive session and are enumerated exceptions under the Open Meetings Act. These exceptions are five ILCS 120/2A, C5, C6, and C21.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.